Welcome to Ability Assistance. My name is Phyllis Jones, Chair of the North Andover Commission on Ability Assistance.
And I'm Stacy Liebowitz, the Secretary for the Commission on Ability Assistance.
Our guest this month is School Committee Chair, Joseph Hicks. Joe, welcome.
Hello, thank you so much for having me.
No, thank you for coming on, especially at such a crucial moment here in town. We had kind of a heated session during town meeting, for those of us, you know, who, well, we were there, but...
Yes, we live in town and attended.
Yes, but for those who weren't there, or maybe didn't follow the situation. But rather than going through the heatedness of it all, being the Commission on Ability Assistance, I'd like to focus a little bit on special ed, both in-town and out-of-district placement. There was a lot of talk about how the special ed budget was factoring into the general budget and a special trust fund. Can you explain what happened with that in terms of how that occurred and how the school committee got to where it got to?
Sure, I'm happy to give that background information for everyone. Just as a note, I was recently selected by my peers to be Chair of the Committee. Happy to share what our thoughts, what my thoughts were going into town meeting and some of the historical background. I'm not here speaking on behalf of the Committee today.
No, no, no.
They do that every couple of weeks together, but I'm happy to share some of my personal thoughts on what happened and why, my own opinions. So, yeah, the past year's been really hard. We've been in the middle of a budget crisis. We all know that. Fiscal year 25, we ended up almost $4 million or $4 million in deficit, then with a projected deficit of $3, $3.5 million for fiscal year, sorry, that's for fiscal year 24, fiscal year 25, which are just about finishing up in a couple of weeks. We also had a deficit of about $3 million, $3.5 million, largely due to the, we didn't have the right projections for this year. So when we discovered last year's deficit, we also discovered that we were going to have a deficit this year.
Did that have anything to do, I know the school's got a tremendous amount of money during the COVID lockdown through the federal government. Did any of that have to do with where we sit right now, the lack of it, or?
Some of it was. We had added some positions that we thought we'd be able to carry over into holding on to and have those permanently funded, and those projections didn't work out the way school committee anticipated. There was not some, always some accurate accounting of how we were keeping track of our money. We've solved a lot of those problems in terms of like knowing how we're spending our money, where the money's going, how much we're spending on everything. Superintendent Lethrop has done a really great job with her team, making sure that we have an accurate accounting of what we're spending and when and where and why. And part of that exercise is then determining this year, what are we really spending on education here in North Andover? What is our budget? And when we did that, we discovered that to move forward, everything that we're doing, it was going to cost the town just over about $71 million.
Okay.
Which is almost 14% or 15% increase from last year's budget from town meeting, which was around $62, $63 million. Big difference.
Yes.
Usually we go up around 2% or 3%, so 14 is a...
Proposition 2.5.
Yes, the schools typically go up 2.5. We've had some really great years. We've gone up 5 the past couple of years, but that wasn't quite enough to really do all the things that we have been doing. So part of the controversy or the heatedness at this year's town meeting was, we know it's going to cost just over $71 million. If we only do what we projected, which was 3.14% or so percent from the town, that's only, I guess, about $64, $65 million, and that's a huge gap. So we need to ask for some more money.
Yep.
Or we need to make a lot of cuts.
A lot of cuts, yes.
We ended up coming someplace in between the two with about $68.2 million, I think was our final number, where we were going into town meeting.
Yep.
Where we, we made a lot of cuts, including having to close a school, lay off several teachers and some other positions, as well as getting a lot of additional funding from the town. So we ended up getting about 9% total of an increase from last year's budget, which is a huge amount of money.
Yeah.
An absolutely enormous amount of money.
That really cuts into that 14% gap significantly.
It does, significantly. But it wasn't enough to keep doing the things we're doing.
Right.
And we are doing a lot of really great things in town. Some people would say we're not, still not doing all the things we should be doing. We should be doing some more.
Well, you don't always get everything you want.
We don't. And I think there's some truth to, there's some truth to that. There are things we really want to do that we can't quite afford right now.
Right.
And it's not that they're not important, it's just that we're not there right now.
You have to prioritize, right?
So, going into town meeting, there was a strong citizens group that was pushing for more money. Originally, they were going to really push for over, to get us to level funding. That's when you carry forward all the things you've been doing, plus whatever inflation you need to keep doing those things.
Right, yeah.
I'm usually a fan of a level funding scheme, not scheme, that's a bad word, scenario. That makes me happy that we're continuing to do the work we do. Maybe an increase in funding would be, is also nice. I'm sorry, level funding, level funding is the wrong word. We wanted to bring forward level services.
Okay.
Yep.
That was, that was my mistake. I apologize for that. Level services when you bring...
You understood what you meant.
When you bring forward all the things, all the services you've been doing, plus the cost of doing them.
So you're not looking to cut most of those services.
Right. Level funding is when you bring forward the same amount of money.
But not necessarily have all the services.
So if you did 62 last year, you gotta do 62 this year, but that means you have to actually cut things because they get more expensive.
Exactly.
So I love level services in general. It was an impossibility this year to do that. We'd have to go over our Proposition 2.5 rules. We'd have to bring in more money through raising taxes on everyone permanently across the board. And going for an override is a thing that takes a long time.
Yes.
We could not do that, we felt, in the amount of time we had from March until the May town meeting. I'm not saying an override is a bad idea. I'm not saying that the town would never go for that. I just didn't think it was the right time this year to put that, to go for that particular We did have some excess levy capacity.
Okay.
When we, when town meeting made an agreement a couple of years ago with the Amazon facility, we allowed them to be, the town decided that they could be tax exempt for 10 years. And each year, we would be able to get a little bit more tax money out of them.
Okay.
The first part of that was we were able to capture some, the monies, the first year that they were there, we were able to capture a lot of money from the, before they took occupancy.
Yes.
So we had a one-time payout that went into free cash.
Okay.
But we're not taking in money every year on a lot of what Amazon is doing on that property. Some personal property we do get money out of, but not necessarily on the...
The whole property.
On the whole property. And that, so that's part of the levy capacity. We decided as a town not to collect that money because Amazon's not paying for it. But if we want to collect it, then we have to have everybody else pay for it. And we didn't think it was right to have everybody else pay for Amazon's taxes.
That's unfair.
So we had, we had in there a built-in, yes, we are not collecting to the levy capacity because that's part of the money there.
Yes.
At town meeting, the town did decide this year to tap into some of that.
Okay.
So we did end up getting on the floor, someone brought forward an amendment to increase our funding by $1 million, and some of that comes from that excess levy capacity. So we are not using all of it up this year. We're using most of it, and that's very gracious and kind of the town to be willing to do that. But we were able to bring in more money while not having to ask for an override.
Right.
Just a little bit of the historical background.
And that's helpful.
Which I think also, we have a lot of older people here in town who are on more of a fixed income and not having to worry about a 2.5 override or any override whatsoever. It's probably very good for them.
Absolutely. I mean, we have some incredibly generous people in town who have been fortunate enough who have a lot more wealth that they have access to. That's just great, and that helps our town. We also have a lot of people who have limited incomes. Our elderly population, we have people who work paycheck to paycheck, who's trying to figure out how each month to buy groceries. Am I going to pay for rent or healthcare this year? A long time ago, I was in that position before. I was fortunate enough to have a full-time job and with benefits and all that. I know what it's like to make that decision. I know it's like, can I go to the doctor this month if I feel ill? Or do I want to be able to buy food for the rest of the month? And that's a hard choice for people to make. So I'm always cognizant of what, asking for more money, what that means. Because in the end, the town is spending other people's money.
Exactly.
It's like...
It's spending your money and our money, but...
It's the community's money.
Exactly.
And I'm always very cautious about asking people to spend money on things that, like, they might not fully benefit from in the same ways.
Exactly.
Everyone benefits from great schools, but if you're an older person whose kids have graduated already, you're not interacting with the teachers each day.
You're beyond that. You're beyond that.
It increases property value, but...
Right, but still.
Right. So we did get an extra, we did get a lot more money than we were anticipating. We've gone up, I think, about 9% this year, and I were 10% instead of the full 14 or 15.
Yes.
So that's still a huge increase. Originally, we were projecting having to lay off many more teachers. We had to lay off some. Doesn't make me happy. Always want more teachers. They're incredibly important. You can't have a school system without them. They're all very kind and wonderful and care so deeply about our kids and want to do good work for them. But if we can't pay everybody, that's, that's hard too. And we had to make some very difficult choices. We were able to bring some of those teachers back though with the increased fund.
Oh, fantastic.
That's great.
And we listened to a lot of the feedback from the townspeople, especially around world languages. So we were able to hold on to some of our world languages programs.
That's fantastic.
Not as much as we, not fully, but not as much, many cuts as we were anticipating.
I know from just following the Moms page, which is a very active page here in town. The German language program was a concern. Was that one that you were able to keep?
Yes, so originally it was going to be cut back a lot more. We were able to make sure that any kid who is currently enrolled in German will be able to continue that, their study of German all the way up through their senior year in high school, including kids who were in 8th grade this year.
Okay.
Will continue to be able to do that for the next several years. We are not going to necessarily, though, continue to offer German to new students. It's going to be limited to French and Spanish. German is a really important language. Languages communicate culture, it's rich, it's vibrant, it's worthy of being studied. Our enrollment numbers are down. Not as many students are making those choices. And you end up with that very difficult choice about where am I going to put the money that's going to benefit as many kids as possible?
When I was in high school, all we had is French and Spanish.
Same here.
We, so we've been able to make that commitment to kids who are currently, who've already made that choice, which I think is really important, to be able to continue that. I think it's an important choice for them to continue. But going forward, we're just going to have one less choice for students to make, which isn't the best of all worlds, but I think there's a reasonable compromise considering how much we were in deficit.
And you have to be able to reallocate your resources, which I think brings us to the question around special education. And what that's looking like in the face of these deficits that have happened, even though you have gotten more money. And pardon me, I'm getting over a cold, so my voice is a little, a little congested. But what does that, what does that landscape look like moving forward?
So in, we're in 2025 right now, right?
Yes.
In October of 2023, the state announced that they would allow certain special education providers outside of the regular, outside of districts, district placement providers to increase their tuitions. It was the first time that it had gone up in a while, and it went up significantly. I think 14% they were allowed to increase by, which was a, it's a large chunk of money.
That's a huge amount, yeah.
I'm, my son is at a district, I'm almost afraid to know what you pay to...
It's not cheap. It's the right thing to do. We should do it. All students are entitled to a free and appropriate public education. We're going to meet those obligations. And at the same time, it does put a strain on our finances.
Yes.
Both of those things are true at the same time. I never want to say this is special education's fault because it's not. Things are costing more money.
That's the reality.
And we've had Senator Tar on, who's told us that one of the things he hears a lot throughout his entire district about special education is the cost of the transportation of what you have to provide to get, for example, my child from here to Beverly.
Yep, it costs a lot of money. And 14% was a huge number. Part of that was like delayed increases for a lot of time, for a lot of time as well. Like they should, like if you had been going up a little bit more every year, it would not have been a big jump. So it's, it's a lot of things coming to our head at once. So that does put a pinch, it is a pinch point, a pressure point on our budget that we have to be aware of and we have to plan for. We've had since, I think, 25th year that they allowed us to start doing it, in the mid-teens, 2016, you were allowed to create a special education stabilization fund.
That's what...
And that was one of the things that was on our...
Right, at the town meeting.
At town meeting. And we've had, had it for the past several years. Every year, town meeting has decided to fund it fully, which is $750,000. And if you use any of that out of it, you would then bring it back to $750,000. And it was the way you were able to save money, just in case.
Yep, yes.
There are a lot of rules around how to access that money. So what would happen is you'd have to, if you had, need to use that money, you could only use so much per year.
Okay.
And you didn't have to get town meeting's approval at the end of the year to authorize the spending of that.
Right, okay.
I'm a fan of having rules about how to use the money. I think we should have rules and processes in place that are clear, understandable.
Of course.
Make sure that things are on the up and up. Since then, we are now allowed, allowed legally to have other types of reserve funds.
Okay.
So now, one of the, the other reserve fund we have in town is the Finance Committee Reserve Fund.
Okay.
So every year, and town meeting has generously done this as well, it's, I think it's been $1.5 million has gone from free cash and other things has been allocated into the reserve fund. Sometimes it gets used, sometimes it doesn't. If it doesn't get used, money goes into free cash and we then put additional $1.5 in. And that's allowed us to save for some of our town projects that we've been doing around town as well. What's great about that is you don't need to wait till town meeting in May to access the money. Still requires town to approve the money going into it, but Finance Committee then has the ability to authorize when it gets spent.
And they can write the check without having to come to the...
And you can make the transfer when it's needed. So we were able to do a transfer, you're able to do it in October if that's when the sudden expense appears. It's not just for special education, it's for any reserve, it's a reserve for the town.
Right, right.
So we've been moving away from funding the Special Education Stabilization Fund and putting money into the reserve fund because, in my opinion, and I think my colleagues on the school committee agree, there's some more flexibility there. And there's not a limit on how much you could access each year. You can only get out of the stabilization fund, I think it was $450,000 every, every two years. So there are some, and when expenses come up, sometimes it could be a quarter million dollars. And if you use that one year, then you'd have much less the following year. So the goal is meant to keep funding the FinCom Reserve and stop funding the stabilization fund. That had a lot of people worried, and I understand some of that fear, it's like...
Yeah, we were two of those people.
As a commission.
Yes. We were able to then have the FinCom write their policy so that there would be a targeted amount in the, in the FinCom Reserve allocated to be for special education overages. That has been like a gentleman's agreement that we've had. I know that's a gendered term, but like, an understanding that we've had between the two groups.
It's an old-school term. How about we call that?
An old-school term. It's been the understanding that we, as we moved away from this, our fear is like, well, what happens if we need money? There was this understanding. Some of the fear is, well, what happens in five years when I'm no longer on school committee and I no longer remember that? I'm not there to remind people, or FinCom has different people. So we were able to put that in policy, that that is the goal, that we have at least that much every year allocated for special education overages, potentially even more if we need it. So that's why I supported this year closing the Special Ed Stabilization Fund, having, knowing that those policies in place to be able to fund the FinCom Reserve. I also think maybe we could put a little bit more into the FinCom Reserve when the time is right, maybe up to $2 million. With inflation, things are getting more expensive.
Right, right, yes.
I think that's something we should explore as a town in a year or so. Like, when the time's right, maybe we should increase those reserves if possible. We ended up, the town meeting side, to transfer all the money out of the Special Ed Stabilization Fund, but they actually then voted to keep it open. So it still exists.
Right.
It has a zero balance.
But it's there in case it's needed. You don't, now you don't have to recreate the wheel.
If we need to someday go back to it, we can put money back in.
And that's why we supported keeping it open.
Keeping it open, yes.
One of the things about special education that's really important is that in district, we are small to medium district. Sometimes we don't have enough of the right teachers or the, or a certain profile student to have programs on our own and to be able to run those efficiently.
Right.
So then we look to doing some out-of-district placements.
Correct.
And some of that is, it's best for the kid. They're gonna, they're able to get the right type of education that they need. We might not have the right service supports here for them. And that's the thing, it's like, where do you get the right services for me?
And that's why the IEPs come into effect socially.
And at the same time, we have a lot of really great special education services in town. And we have a lot of wonderful special educators who do a lot of great work for our kids. So we do have a medically fragile program at the Sargent School that does amazing work. It's not huge. The numbers are like small, but enough to make, make it worth us having the program on our own. We're able to keep our kids in town and be part of our community because they are our kids, and I want them to be with us.
Exactly.
We have the right amount of support, the right space, and those students are then part of us, and they have a wonderful program over there, and I'm glad that they're part of us fully. But that's also like, it comes down to some of those economic choices, like can we do right by the kids and make sure we're spending money wisely?
Right, because you're still working on federal guidelines, which I think a lot of people don't necessarily understand. You've got the Americans with Disabilities Act that is turning 30, isn't it 35 this year?
I think so. Oh, my goodness.
I think it's 35 this year.
Yeah, from 1990.
1990.
Yeah, under George Bush, senior.
So we've got the Americans with Disabilities Act that you have to play with. You've got the federal government of the FAPE, which is the Free Appropriate Public Education.
Yep.
So those are federal programs, plus you've got whatever state programs you need to abide by, plus the town just wants to do right by their kids.
Me too.
So it's a, it's a juggle.
It is. And sometimes we are unable to do what's right for the kids in town. So we then have to, we might have an out-of-district placement. I worked in Lawrence for several years, and we had several students who were visually impaired. And we had a teacher of the blind. She was at the high school, but she serviced, she did all the services for the kids across the district.
Okay.
A big enough population across the district that warranted having a teacher.
Yep.
And it was great. Because otherwise, we would have had to then have out-of-district placements to Francis Perkins School of Blind.
Perkins, yep.
And a lot of our kids, that's a great school, but it's for a particular type of student, particular profile.
Correct.
And we were able to provide a lot of those services that kids needed right in district. And they were then part of our school, part of our community. And it was better for everybody in a lot of different ways. I had two students who were visually impaired with very different profiles in my class, and I learned the most that year about how to be a good educator in terms of like, how do I really work with kids who have very different needs than I had ever experienced before? And it was, I learned so much, and that teacher was there to help me learn how to do those things. If we have a student in North Andover that would need those services, sometimes what we now do is we turn to one of our collaboratives to help us develop that stuff.
Right. Which is...
Which is why we're part of those collaboratives. That's the benefit of that, is that we don't have a large population of students who need that stuff, but we might have one or two that need some things. And then we can turn to an outside organization to give us that support and not have to do an out-of-district placement.
Now, your education background, was that in education? You're, okay.
Yep, I got my bachelor's in history. I have a master's of arts in teaching in social studies. And I also have my principal, assistant principal license.
Okay, so when we look at that, because I know a lot of people are like, you know, well, if you're a lawyer, you go to law school. If you're a doctor, you go to med school.
Right.
And a lot of people don't realize, when you go to school for education, you're learning, I hate to call it a base level, but it's sort of like with law school, you're learning a base level, and not everybody has the same education for special ed. That that's specialized, isn't it?
It is, and so there's a number of teachers. My current license as an educator is, I have my admin license and I have my professional license in secondary social studies, history.
Okay, my favorite subject.
Same here.
I will have in my classes, if I was, I'm an instructional coach right now, but if I was in a regular classroom, general classroom with students, I would have students on an IEP and a 504 all the time.
Yes.
That's going to happen.
Which is different from having though, somebody who needs more services than that.
And I would get support from, from somebody in the building to make sure I understand all the accommodations I need to make to give kids the supports that they need, that I'm following the IEP. Sometimes, in some classes, a teacher might have a co-teacher who's a special edu, a certified special education teacher to help work with a larger number of kids in that space. So a lot of our, in our district, we have a lot of professionally licensed special education teachers who know more about working with kids who have very different needs.
And, and I think that that's important for people to know because not every teacher, every teacher's good, but not every teacher is educated for the same exact thing. Sort of like, you're, I'll go gynecologist. Your gynecologist isn't necessarily going to be able to do neurology type of a thing.
It's a specialty.
Yeah.
And I, I think that's interesting. I mean, I grew up in a time, I have an younger sister with a disability, and she was segregated into a quote-unquote "special ed" class. I'm going to go on a limb here, I'm assuming the structure is much more inclusive where people are mainstreamed, as they should be, in classes, and you have like those co-teachers who come in, or, you know, a special ed education teacher, for lack of a better term, who works with the teacher in question to make sure that there is that inclusive environment.
So the general rule is, for mainstream students, that's the goal for every student. Up to 80% should be spent in a general education classroom. Pullout services for 20% is allowed. If you go above that, you need to really justify why.
So, and that's for the sub-separate, partially-integrated program, correct?
Yep. And that's just to make sure that kids are part of the community as much as possible.
Yes.
So a student who might need some specialized reading services, perhaps they get pulled out first for, just for a reading class, to get the intensive reading education that they need so that they can learn to read. That's one class out of their entire day.
Yes.
They, you wouldn't need to necessarily justify that through all of the other things because it's less than 20% of their day.
It's more of a tutoring situation at that point.
They go and they meet with a special education person who is certified in a reading program to teach them the fundamentals of reading in a very particular way. I don't have that background, so I couldn't do it for them.
And that's where I'm getting at with the teachers, that's why it's so special.
Yeah, and, but then they spend the rest of their day with everybody else doing all the same things. And then they might need some additional support in class with some things, but that's okay.
Right, right.
Some kids never get pullout services, they have an IEP and everything that they need is offered by the regular education teacher and maybe an assistant, a teaching assistant or a special education teacher coming in for a little bit of the day to do some work with them.
I can tell you, my son was in the, for a long time, the sub-separate, partially-integrated program at the Atkinson and then at NAMSS. And they were very good, unfortunately, they just couldn't meet his needs by a certain point. But no, it was a, I knew several kids who were in that program and it was fantastic because they got pulled out for, it was typically the three Rs, the reading, writing, and arithmetic. And then they were fully integrated for the social studies, for the science, for dodgeball, although we don't play dodgeball anymore.
No sports, no targeted athletic.
Sports, yep.
Yeah, so I mean, that's really important. And then the other guideline we always keep in mind is like, when you have a general education classroom, you're gonna have students with an IEP, as we should. It's part of my job as an educator to educate everybody. They do fifty percent, no more than fifty percent of a class can be, at any one time should be, have students with an IEP. Just to make sure that, because after that, not that the students there are like, not doing bad things or anything, but after that, it no longer counts as a mainstream classroom. It then qualifies and becomes a sub-separate class.
Right, interesting, interesting.
So it's not because students are necessarily going to take away from anything, it's that you then, you're interrupting their free and public education in a mainstream setting.
That balance.
And that balance, because now they're not mainstream.
Yeah.
So it's, that's where I, why that's an important rule for me, is like, if we're going to do mainstreaming and make sure kids are part of our community, we need to make sure.
That makes complete sense.
Now, I know that as a parent with an out-of-district placement child, you know, if you're able to remain in district, you've got the after-school sports, the after-school clubs. I find that a lot of parents who have out-of-district students, especially when they get to late middle school and high school, there are no programs provided by third parties. There are no programs provided by the schools, which kind of leaves the parents hanging.
Yeah.
Is there, I mean, I've spoken to, at the school department, the person who coordinates the out-of-district placement. And I know that the town has been working with perhaps the local Y to get a program going. Do you know anything about that?
I don't.
I'm catching you off guard, I'm sorry.
I don't, I think it's a need, absolutely. We, as parents, one of the, as working parents, I've had two kids go through, they went through the Atkinson, they're going to eighth grade at the middle school. Having an onsite after-school, before and after-school program through Kid Stop and Breakfast Club was a lifesaver for me and my husband. We would not have been able to have a family the way we want, have a family and be able to afford the things that we need to do for our family without it. And I'm very thankful to community programs for being able to offer that. I've worked in other districts where that type of programming is just.
Doesn't exist.
Doesn't exist, or if it does, it's not as high quality. So, and like, or as extensive, we have it at all the buildings before and after school, and pretty affordable.
Yes.
I know it's not as affordable as most people like, but it was pretty affordable that we were able to make it work. That just stops being available. It's hard when the need isn't as, the number of people who need that as the kids get older is not as great. The families that need it need it more intensely, but there just aren't as many families. By middle school kids, our seventh or eighth grade kids are able to start going home in general on their own.
Latchkey, latchkey.
My kids can now walk home and they're, I get home about an hour after them, it's okay. We were able to start doing that at the end of fifth grade and the beginning of sixth grade.
They start working by the time they're in seventh grade roughly?
At fourteen you can start, in some places get some work.
Exactly, that's the school, after-school.
So that independence.
So that type of after-school program just isn't as much of a need for the whole community. So then it's, how do you then do that for the people in our community that do need that? Because it is a very real need and a very important need, how can we structure that? It's, I think it's something that we should start, we should really think about. And it's something that we need to explore so that we can continue to do what's good for our families.
Right, right.
Providing a safe place for kids to be after school so that they can, so parents can do the work that they need to do to be able to pay the bills is a.
So that the town has the money that it needs to be able, it's a cyclical.
Very much, it's an important thing that we do.
No, that's, that's great. Now, how, I saw how big the special education services were pre-COVID lockdown. We know for a fact that a lot of kids who were on IEP, who weren't on IEPs or 504 plans prior to COVID, they ended up needing those services post-COVID. What has the special education system services changed? How much, how have you changed that, given that, that huge gap in terms of a need that wasn't there prior to?
I'm, I'd be, I'm not sure if we, I think it happened around, it happened around the same time as COVID.
Okay.
I'm not sure yet if it was necessarily caused by that. I think there are some other factors beforehand that were leading us in this direction. I think they're perhaps exacerbated by COVID.
Right, right.
I think there is a connection, I don't think it's the sole or root cause of the thing.
Right, okay.
Particularly, in my opinion, I think a lot of it is around two big areas. One, around reading instruction. There's been a lot of changes in the past five years or so about what it means to teach kids how to read and like, what is the best way where we can do that? And there's been a lot of shifts in research and how we, how we go about educating our kids in that way. And I do think part of the COVID experience is that there has been an increase in kids needing social emotional support.
Yes.
And when those get to a certain level, social and emotional needs can be part, a reason for qualification for an IEP. That, there is a thing there.
Yeah.
In terms of the reading instruction for a lot, and reading instruction and literacy instruction has gone back and forth, there's been a pendulum. In the nineties and early two thousands, we went towards a balanced literacy approach. And I'm not gonna go into all the research, but it's the way that people were being educated that we thought was going to best serve kids.
Okay, fair.
Whole language instruction. We have learned that it doesn't work as well as you would like it to work for a particular subgroup of kids.
Okay.
And I'll use my own two kids as an example, because they're twins, but they're very different. Whatever reading program that was used, or curriculum that was used, or approach, my daughter was gonna learn to read through any of them just fine.
Okay.
And a lot of kids would do that. There is a group of kiddos who have, who have struggled a little bit more with becoming readers, that a balanced literacy approach doesn't work well enough. And then they often would then eventually qualify for having specific learning disability in reading, for language, and then need special education services. And often that would then, the services would be a reading program like Wilson or a Gillingham type of program, which are some classic evidence-based, research-based literacy instruction programs that work. What we have been doing, the swing has now been, more of our curriculum is now that evidence-based science of reading, lots of different names for it, instruction. That will help a lot of our kids, those who are going to read without any type of reading program are gonna be fine, they're gonna continue to be fine. But for the other group of kids, this is going to be a better type of reading instruction that's going to help them learn to read better, more effectively. And then hopefully, in my opinion, or my hope is that you then have less kids who then have that specific learning disability, who are learning to read. And so my son was diagnosed with dyslexia.
Okay.
He's always going to have that, but since he's been able to get those reading services, he no longer needs the special education services because he's able to access the general ed curriculum at the appropriate level.
That's great.
So he still has that as part of his learning profile.
And he's always gonna be.
And it's always going to exist, but he was able to learn to read so that he is now able to access the general ed curriculum. So there is, so he no longer qualifies for an IEP. And that's, that's a little hard for people to understand, it's like, he still has the thing, it's still there, part of him.
But you're meeting him where he's at, in other words.
Because of the type of reading instruction he's had, he's able to make progress, right? So as we, and we, literacy instruction has been at the forefront of what we've been doing for the past couple of years. Right around the time as COVID was happening, we were starting to make these shifts, that we're really looking at, how do we teach kids to learn to read at the younger grades using some better phonics and phoneme awareness programs like Hegarty? What does it mean to do literacy instruction in the middle elementary grades and we've been moving towards wit and wisdom? And what does that then look like in terms of helping our kids learn? Some really great shifts that our district's now implementing all over the place.
So by doing that, you're stabilizing everybody.
We're investing in a really high-quality, in high-quality instruction materials as our general education approach. And the impact should be that we overall have less kids who will then be, who then need special education services. If they still need them, of course, we're going to offer them.
Right, of course.
But if there's a lot we can do with our tier-one instruction to help kids not need those things, it's gonna be better for everybody. Because once you need a service, you're then somehow missing out on something else.
Yes, right, right.
So to go to a reading program four days a week for thirty minutes, that's two hours that you're not spending with your classmates in the generalized classroom doing whatever the thing is that they were doing.
Right.
And that's a need and what we want to give kids, I would rather have all of our kids together doing whatever it is that they're doing together. If we can figure out how to do general education better.
No, and that makes sense, because, you know, I think it was, my son was pulled out for reading, before the sub-separate classes were instituted. He was pulled out for reading, but then that meant he missed either art or gym because there are only so many hours in a day. So now he's missing out on either art or gym, which is, well, I could do without the gym, but, you know, I go, well, I go back to dodgeball, but you said that doesn't exist anymore.
But, but.
But still, the activity.
Exactly, well, that's the thing, you're missing out on that, on that social skills basis.
Yeah, because that's team building.
All day long, I'm doing this hard academic work and then when everybody else gets to do the really important music, art, computer programming, digital literacy, health and gym stuff, I have to go do more.
Of that.
Academic work, that feels also a little unfair there, like, wait, and I loved going to music class, I loved going to art class.
I do too.
Even though I didn't like the dodgeball part, I'm actually pretty good at it, I loved going to that class.
I'm Gen X, you know, we still have issues with dodgeball.
I am too.
A little trauma there.
Yeah, but it still is like part of, like, I still wanted to be with the other kids in class.
It's that team building camaraderie, all of that, that you don't wanna miss out on.
The learning that happens in the building.
You know, I remember we used to have, as kids, we also, beyond red balls going at our faces, we also used to have cooking, we used to have sewing. And everybody, boys and girls.
Girls, yep, home economics.
You know, took part in home ec, and I know that a lot of parents were like.
It's like some life skill building.
They took that away, but now you're saying they're bringing in computer literacy and, you know, things that are more.
There's been a shift in what related arts are offered, but they all, all matter. I enjoyed my sewing classes in middle school.
I was not good at that.
I now quilt, so like, I still, I'm glad I learned how to use a sheet about age. I learned how to cook in sixth and seventh grade, I can still, I still cook to this day.
But those are life skills.
I also learned some important things in woodshop and metal shop too, so I can use a bandsaw.
I would've had to make a bracelet, it was very fun.
Like, I can do these things, and we did silk screening.
I was about to say, we did, I grew up in Framingham, we did, in eighth grade, by the time you hit eighth grade, we had cooking and sewing every, every semester. Which I loved because I always had to go to summer school, my mother would be like, you're taking math, you're taking English, and then you can take one extra. And it was either usually sewing or cooking that I preferred to take. But we took silk screening, we took metal shop, we took woodworking, and then that was the pillar for, okay, do you wanna go to a traditional high school? Or do you wanna go to a tech?
Like a trade, right.
A tech school.
My high school, where I grew up in Connecticut, had, we had a tech school nearby, but we were a comprehensive high school that had the wood and metal shops and the industrial arts areas as well. And then the town near us, you could go more intense and go to Wilcox Tech where the former secretary of education went. And like, it was, it's a great program, Wilcox is a great, amazing program, there's a lot of really great, just like Greater Lawrence is a great program for kids.
We get, we get most of our crew from there.
Yep.
Yeah, we get most of our crew from GLTS.
And I love the new relationship we're building with them, with our After Dark program.
What is that?
What is that?
So a lot of kids make the choice to go to, go to the tech in eighth grade, right?
Okay, yep.
And a number of kids take, make that choice and they go and they have a wonderful high school experience and do exploratory in their fresh, their ninth grade year and then they get into a shop.
Take a shop and, yep.
Go with it.
The After Dark program, it allows us kids who are in tenth grade now to make that choice a little later in their high school career. So they do North Andover High School in the mornings.
Okay.
Do all their, and so instead of going to the tech and doing all their academic work and their shop work.
Okay.
They do all their academic work at North Andover High, and then they go over to the tech after their regular day is done at like one thirty, two o'clock. And they stay until like five or six at night and they do their shop work. So that they're able to then, even though they've made the choice later, they're able to get all their academic high school things done and still get the really important technical education that they want. That's gonna be the right choice for them by the time they graduate. And it just started last year, we had, I think, ten kids initially started, I think we have seventeen participating this upcoming year, I think it's a wonderful program. It does cost us money.
But sending the kids irregardless to GLTS costs you money.
And I think it's the right, you're in eighth grade, you don't know what you might want yet.
Exactly.
And then all of a sudden, you're halfway through your high school year and you're like, this, this isn't necessarily the right path for me, I need to make a different choice. I wanna make sure that we allow kids to make that choice, that's gonna help them, if we're gonna educate kids for their future, that sometimes part of that is realizing, ooh, this isn't for me. I might, we need to make a different choice, and that happens to kids in college too.
Oh, of course.
I went to college, I went to this college to study this thing and I realized.
And even after college.
That wasn't me, I want, and like, to be able to.
You evolve, you evolve and change over time.
To make that choice is actually very mature and say, this isn't the right thing for me, I'm gonna do something different that's more, I'm gonna have more success in.
My daughter transferred from North Andover High to GLTS her sophomore year. At the time, they had a communications program where they did some, some technical stuff and then some traditional type of communications. And she loved it, she went on to college initially to be a special ed teacher, halfway through first semester, she's like, not for me. She did a ton of volunteering here at CAM, looks at me and says, I wanna go back to what I was doing at CAM. And now she's at a major local station, working on the news.
Doing the very real important necessary work that we need to make sure that people know what's happening.
And that's because North Andover was able to send her to the tech. She made a determination of realizing, mommy already knew, but as a parent, you know.
You gotta let them find their own way.
Exactly. You know, but now she's doing what she truly loves and it really goes all the ways back to high school.
Yeah, and the goal for, for me, the goal for high school or for our education system is to make sure that kids are ready and able to do what they want after high school. Whatever it is, the choice or the path that they are going on, make sure that they can do that, that kids have that genuine choice. And for some kids, that means giving them all, access to all the AP classes that they want so they can get into a highly competitive school.
But that doesn't work for every kid.
And we should do that, but that's, you're right, that's not for everyone.
And a tech school, I mean, I think the reputation has changed so much from when I was a kid.
Dr. Cardona.
Yeah, I mean, I look, I drive by Essex Aggie, for example, when I think back, I wish.
They don't call that ad anymore.
Oh, they don't, sorry.
No.
What do they call it?
It's North Shore.
I apologize.
Yes, it's North Shore Technical School or something, I still call it Essex Aggie.
Driving by, I see the programs and like animal husbandry and I'm thinking, maybe if I had it all to do again, I could go back and become a veterinarian.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's really turned around, which is so wonderful because it offers people opportunities. Because not everybody is going to go to college, nor should they, if that's not the dream.
Do you know how many kids who go to GLTS actually do end up going to college? We have a, we have a student.
It offers so many pathways.
Yeah, we have a member of our crew who went off this past year to go to college, who's studying the same thing they were doing here for us for like two years. And when he came back for the summer, he texted me and he's like, got any more shows left? And now he's in the control room right now, something he was.
Doing good work.
Exactly, exactly.
I think, well, one on North Shore Essex Technical School.
They're gonna, they're gonna kill us.
They do have some wonderful animal programs. Because Greater Lawrence Tech School doesn't have those, students in North Andover are allowed to apply specifically to those programs at Northern Essex.
Right, because it's an out-of-district.
It's an out-of-district, but we do have some students that go there. Our former secretary of education, before the current one, Dr. Cardona, grew up in Meriden, Connecticut, parents were, he was a child immigrant, his parents came from Puerto Rico to Meriden. His family owned an autoware shop, he went to the local tech school, Wilcox Tech, I grew up in the town next to it. Meriden has two high schools, regular high schools, Maloney and Platte, he went to the tech school, Wilcox, graduated there and decided, I'm not, and the goal was to take over the family business. Wasn't the right choice for him, he went to college, went to Central Connecticut State University, went on, became a teacher, principal, administrator, got his master's and his doctorate and became secretary of education. Went to a tech school. Like, they are amazing places that teach kids incredible skills, you get a quality education. And you often learn more than, like, they probably come out of school knowing more about how to do things than I did.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's important, like, we need people to know those things.
And it's no longer what used to be when we were kids, the school that those kids went to.
Absolutely.
No, it's very competitive.
It's very competitive now, it's wonderful.
It's wonderful. I thought of one other thing, oh, I lost it in my head right now.
Well, Chairman Hicks, thank you so much.
Oh, we are out of time? Oh, there was a five-minute warning before.
Yeah, we're a little beyond that, so I tend to be the timekeeper because I have that side eye that goes over.
I feel like, I'm so sorry for talking so much.
So our floor manager, no, this has been amazing and we'd love to have you back.
Yeah, we've had some episodes that were supposed to be between thirty and forty minutes.
They've gone like an hour.
Yeah, depending upon who the guest is, we've had, so please.
No, this has been wonderful, such amazing information, I feel like I've learned a lot and I've lived in this town for twenty years, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And as programs develop and change, specifically around, you know, special ed, we would love to have you back on to discuss those programs.
Can I put in two quick plugs?
Go for it.
So one, we did start last year, a couple of years ago, we did a program review of special education services, it produced a report. Right now have the advisory committee on special education doing work to look at that report and soon, hopefully in the next term, they're going to make some recommendations to the full school committee about what actions we should take and when.
Right.
So that's really important. Number two, one of the things we learned this spring is that there are a lot of people who really wanna be involved in making our schools better. Like, we have some strong momentum. Like, we have some strong momentum taking us forward. Please want to have them stay involved. We are going to start our meetings, fill up again every other week on August 27th, so please come to our meetings. Every meeting, there's something important that we're talking about. We won't get the budget, of course, until November, but in the fall, we'll be talking about really important things that we want people to be there to hear about, because it's, it's the education that we're trying to build for your kids that you should be there for.
Oh, and that's important.
And we're gonna try our best to be at more community events, we're gonna try and be at National Night Out, we're gonna try, we're thinking about maybe being at the farmer's market in the late summer, early fall. So please come visit us.
Those are great plugs, we love hearing that.